Recording in progress.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Today is December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're located at the county building on the third floor in the county council chambers. It is five seventeen, and we will have a pledge allegiance by our own Tim Gillie. Please stand.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. That will bring us down to roll call. We have our county attorney, Scott Broadhead. We have our county council, Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Thomas, Councilman Strunberg, Councilman Hamner, Councilman Wardle present. We also have in the county manager's office, county manager Andy Welch, Assistant County Manager Brittany Lopez, along from the clerk's office, Nikki. Thank you for being here. And thank each one of you for being here. That will bring us down to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience by raise of hand that would like to make a public comment? Scene one, three minutes? Okay. You know how to do that. Make sure that light's green.
Jerry Hilton, Twilla County Recorder. Council members, thank you for this time. I want to speak briefly about the decision to pause personnel requests and position upgrades until another McGrath wage and position study is completed. You know I'm a strong supporter of data benchmarking and analysis. I am also fully in favor of budgeting for a professional study that the two thousand and twenty-seven budget is built on current information. But the way this decision is being implemented creates real consequences for the people doing the work today. Your last McGrath study was completed, or was, began in mid-two thousand and twenty-one. It wasn't implemented until mid-two thousand and twenty-two, and even then, only at the lowest level. The higher competency tiers weren't implemented for the two thousand and twenty-three budget as originally planned. Full implementation has never occurred. Our employees have been doing the work that matches those higher tiers, and they have taken on new skills, certifications, and responsibilities that the county itself required of them. They're not asking for anything extraordinary. They're asking for the county to honor the commitments made three years ago. Now we are pausing everything again. The reason cited was an increase in personnel and upgrade requests this year, twenty to thirty instead of the usual four to five. I want to be very clear. The only reason you were seeing increase is because many of us waited until the budget cycle, exactly as the council asked us to do so that they would not face mid-year surprises. We honored that direction. Our employees did their part, their supervisors did their part, and they are being penalized for following rules. In our Franklin Covey work, we talk about the see-do-get model. The results we come directly, the results we get come directly from paradigms we choose to operate from. Right now, the county is choosing a paradigm of delay. The result we will get is discouragement, turnover, and erosion of trust. We also talk about affecting this being getting the results we want today in a way that allows us to get better results in the future. Freezing progress for another study does not get us better results for the future. Studies do not improve morale. Studies do not retain talent. Studies do not reward people who have earned that acknowledgement. Leadership is not only about intention, it's about alignment. Your employees hear the county talking about modernization, about excellence, about being competitive in a difficult labor market, but what they feel is a pattern of stall, delay, and non-implementation. I am asking you to reconsider the approach. Fund this study for two thousand and twenty-seven, use it to modernize our entire compensation system, but do not use the study as a tool to delay legitimate earned upgrades and personnel needs this year. Our people deserve clarity, consistency, and leadership that matches the principles we are teaching in Franklin Covey. As habit number one reminds us, we are responsible for our choices. This is a pivotal choice. Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us down to our minutes, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, chair to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Hoffman, second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those may oppose say nay. Sounds unanimous. Brings down to the check registry. Everything is online. Any check that is written out. Chair to entertain a motion to check registry.
Motion to approve.
Hearing a motion to approve from Councilman Strunberg, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas, all those in favor of approving the check registry, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose say nay. That is approved. That will bring us down to the consent agenda contracts in our local agreement with Lake Point City. Lake Point?
That's right. Thank you, Chairman Hamner. The agreement that you have is just the two thousand and twenty-six extension for the interlocal services that we provide to Lake Point. It is the same that we do every year. They require policing services, they require road services, and they require some civil inspection services that we've been providing. The one thing that we do need to do is we do need to amend the contract. They are not technically Lake Point City, they are just Lake Point. And so if you move to adopt this, I would ask that you amend any reference to Lake Point City to just be Lake Point.
Is there any questions or comments from the council? On the interlocal agreement? If not, chair to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion first that we amend the contract and strike the reference to city throughout the contract and just have it be Lake Point.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Wardle, to strike city and just have a reference referring to Lake Point.
We'll still approve the contract?
No, we have to do the amendment separately.
Hearing a second from Councilman Hoffman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose say nay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement with Lake Point.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Wardle, approve the interlocal agreement with Lake Point. Is there any comments? If not, hearing a second. Hearing a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor of approval of the interlocal agreement with Lake Point, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those that may oppose say nay. That passes unanimously from what I, that brings us down to resolution, resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty, adjusting the Twilla County budget for the two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year.
All right, council, this will be our last adjustment for the year. The manager's office is transferring nineteen million dollars from the general fund to the capital projects fund.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments from the council? Not?
This is the amount that was recommended by Kerry from the auditor's office.
Yeah, we worked together on this. I had a higher amount, she had this amount, and I agreed this is the correct amount. I agree with that.
Chair to entertain a motion to open up public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Wardle, second from Councilman Strunberg, open up public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those that may oppose say nay. Hearing none, public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the audience by raise of hands that would like to speak to resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty, adjusting the Twilla County budget of two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year? Thank you.
So did Ty's point about Kerry collaborating with the manager's office. Kerry did collaborate with the manager's office. My concern with this transfer is that when the funds are transferred, they do need to have a plan associated with them. And right now, there is no plan associated with those funds being transferred to the capital projects fund. The funds staying in, the comment was that we can have them in the general fund and take a write-up for them being over, or we can transfer them to the capital projects fund with no plan, and either way is a write-up. So my counsel to the council has been that it is much easier to leave them in the general fund than it is to transfer them back out of the capital projects fund. So this is a management recommendation, not an auditor's office recommendation.
Comments noted. Any, with that said, chair to entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Strunberg, is there a second? Hearing a second from Councilman Wardle, all those in favor of closing public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those that may oppose say nay. Okay, chair to entertain a motion for?
Before, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Andy, in the association, as we've talked about this, you indicated that there are several projects that we have identified these funds to be used for.
That is correct. So we have a capital improvement plan that we put together. It's a five-year plan. If you look at that, there are that many projects over the next number of years, actually, and so I do have that if we want to at some point adopt that so that that is the plan that we have. We can certainly do that at a future meeting if you'd like. There are that many projects going out the next five years, so.
Okay.
I do have those identified by, it's a lot of the parks and recreation, roads, emergency services, so we do have a number of projects that are lined up for that.
Okay, sounds good. Chair to entertain a motion for resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor of resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose say nay. That is adopted. That will bring us down to resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one, establishing the salaries of the Twilla County officers for two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year. Andy?
Council, as you recall, last year, we have to adopt the salaries of department heads and elected officials each year. That was some legislation that was passed a couple of years ago. So last year was the first year that we did adopt that. So we used their current salaries times the COLA that we were, and the merit that we were including in, and updated that table, and we need to approve that, but we have to have a public hearing on that each year. So this is just an update from last year based on the COLA and merit that you've recommended.
Thank you. Any questions for Andy, comments? If not, chair to entertain a motion to open up public hearing on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one.
So moved.
Hearing a motion, Councilman Wardle, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor of resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose say nay. Okay, public hearing is now open. Is there anybody in the audience by raise of hand that would like to speak to resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one? That's establishing the salaries of the Twilla County officers for the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-six. Seeing none, chair to entertain a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Strunberg, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Wardle. All those in favor of closing public hearing on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one, say aye.
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 All those that may oppose say nay. That is adopted. Public hearing is now closed. Chair to entertain a motion on resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one.
So moved.
Hearing a motion for Councilman Wardle, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Strunberg. All those in favor of resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one, say aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose say nay. That is adopted. Thank you. That will bring us down to resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-two, adopting the Twilla County budget for the two thousand and twenty-six fiscal year. Andy?
Just as a recap from our last meeting, there were still a couple of items that we needed to have a discussion on, that we needed a final decision on. And if we, we have the tenet of budget prepared, and if you make these recommendations, we'd have to amend that to include or exclude as you see fit. So the remaining items that we had to discuss were some personnel positions. It was the event coordinator from the Parks and Recreation from part-time to full-time, the internal auditor with accounting from the auditor's office, moving it from a part-time to a full-time, Meals on Wheels from a point two-five to point five, and then two food preparation workers in the aging department moving from point two-five to point five. Those were the remaining items that we discussed the last two meetings, but we wanted everybody to be here before we made a final decision on those. And so these are the positions that we need some discussion. We have all of the departments are here to answer more questions if you have additional questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Andy? If not, then it opens up for discussion from the council. Any comments or additions?
Are we taking these one by one in discussion, or are we?
What would you like to do, council? Take it one by one or take them together?
One by one.
There are three things we should.
What, one by one?
I assume you're not all going to vote in a block, so I would think it'd make more sense to do it one by one.
Okay, one by one.
The first one is the event program coordinator from?
The event coordinator for, at the peak?
Correct.
Okay, chair to entertain a motion for the event coordinator at the peak.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I can get a little more clarification or understanding. Are they requesting two positions?
Yes, so the first position that we're moving from part-time to full-time was approved by the council earlier in November. This was the second position that there was more discussion that you hadn't decided on yet. So one was approved, this is the second one.
I believe in the November meeting, we had a split vote of two to two. And so this was held over, and then I was gone last week.
Okay, this is for one additional employee.
This one? Correct.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, from part-time to full-time, that's, yes.
What we did in the last meeting is we just went one by one with each council member stating their preference, or we can take a
Okay.
Roll call vote or a voice vote.
Councilman Hoffman?
No.
Councilman Thomas?
You know, I'm willing to give one position between two of them to Cory. I mean, I'm kind of in the opinion, choose which one you want. I mean, I'll give you one, but I'm not going to give you two. So I, I'd like to have an understanding. If you got to have one, and you're asking Santa Clauses, which one, I mean, to help me understand, I'll, I'll give you one of them, but not two.
And I did discuss this with Cory, and he want, the other position was the higher priority for the two, and so the other one that you approved was his highest priority.
So this one is not.
This is the second priority.
The other one was the higher priority.
Okay. So no on this? Councilman Strunberg?
I, I'm gonna, I think I'm probably switching my vote from before. I think I'm, I'm a no. I think this is one that we can hold off and see what happens when we're further along with the projects down there. So right now, I'm a no.
Okay. Hamner will be no. Councilman Wardle?
Nope.
Okay, next one?
Yeah, the internal auditor with accounting, going from a point four-nine to a full-time position.
So before you ask, so a point of clarification, the proposed budget you have has the position in it?
Does not.
Or does not have that?
Yeah.
We just voted on it.
Correct, does not have it in. Yeah, we'll do it, we'll have a.
I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on.
I, I'm preparing an amendment to exhibit A that will add specifically what we're doing.
Okay.
Would add in the positions which we would have to amend.
The proposed budget does not have?
Correct, correct. You got it. So this is the internal auditor with accounting.
Internal auditor. Any comments or, oh, we go one by one.
Okay, so a question is, because I can't, I didn't hear that on the center. So what are we voting on again for?
This is eternal, in the auditor's office. They're wanting a?
Moving it from a point nine FTE to a full-time.
Point, uh, point nine?
Point four-nine.
Four-nine to a full-time position. Do you have a comment on that? Do you know what?
Thank you for clarification.
Okay. Anybody want to comment? Do we keep it, do you want it a full-time? Do you want to keep it at a point four-nine?
I'm going to move to keep it as a point four-nine.
Okay, part-time. Councilman Hoffman?
No, I'm not going to second that.
Okay, Strunberg?
Um, so is it a motion to just keep it a four-nine?
Like?
Or what, how are we doing?
That's, that's a good question.
The proposal is in the, in this, that we move it to a point, to a full-time. So you can run a motion one of two ways. We could run it to keep it where it's currently at, or we can say no to the additional full-time position.
I believe Councilman Thomas made a motion to keep it at part-time, at point four-nine.
Okay, but we need a second?
That's, that's why. Councilman Hoffman does not want to second it. Councilman Strunberg?
No, I can't second that.
Okay. Uh, to keep it at point four-nine, I'll second that.
I was going to second it.
Okay, Councilman Wardle?
Question, calling question on it then.
Calling question, Councilman Hoffman, how do you vote?
I don't know. I don't think we should get, I think we just need three employees in that department, so I vote no for any change.
Councilman?
Make sure I know what I could, tell me again, let him vote no.
You're voting on your motion to keep it?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Strunberg?
Um, I thought this should have been a full-time. That's how I voted last time, but rather than go no, I will vote yes to at least the point four-nine.
So you're voting yes to it?
I will.
Hamner was yes. Wardle?
I'm also yes.
Okay, that was four to one. Next one?
This is the Meals on Wheels from Aging, moving it from a point two-five to a point five employee. I think you received an email earlier today from the Health Department Director on these next positions.
Okay, Councilman Wardle?
First of all, thank you for the email. It clarified so much. I really appreciate it. I am a yes on both of these, the Meals on Wheels and the food preparation workers, but if we're only taking one, Meals on Wheels, my answer's yes.
Okay, I was also a yes. Councilman Strunberg?
Yes.
Councilman?
Okay, we're just one, yeah.
Okay, next one?
Food, food preparation worker, I'm a yes on.
Okay, I'll be a yes on that one?
I'm a yes as well.
Yes, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Next one?
So just so I'm clear, when I make the motion on the amendment, that we will be adopting, uh, amending to add the Meals on Wheels in and the food preparation worker in. Scott?
Two there.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
The next two items that were still outstanding, one is the administration building landscaping. As I think we mentioned last time, we were working with the state on the courthouse property, and we will get some additional money. And so this is some of this one-time money that we get sometimes, so we had some money in to do the landscaping out front. We did a study a few years ago, and just as, so just as a reminder, Brittany can show here in just a second here the layout that we had prepared for the front lawn, but it is, would be some one-time money that, that you could use. It's up to you. If you want to, Brittany, I don't know if you want to explain a little bit of this?
I don't want to tie off my y'all. That was funny, Ty. Um, hey, because I wasn't talking into my mic, right?
Good one.
Um, so council, I don't know if you remember when we did this. This actually was when Cory first came on board, and he was helping with this. We brought several different landscape designs to you, and this was the landscape design you actually voted on that you guys wanted to do in front of the building. It's not as elaborate as you think it is. I think that it just goes right along with the other improvements that we've done to this. Also, remember that the funding that we'd use towards this is one-time monies. It's not like it's regular monies that we have coming in. So what it includes is, this will make it so that we have ADA accessibility in the front of the building. So this, all this parking right here would be ADA. It completes a ramp that goes up to this part. And when we installed the doors, we did include the doors on this side of the building to have the ADA button. Has the flagpoles. I know you guys would be really sad to get rid of our bent flagpoles out front, but it moves the flagpoles to the middle. These sections you see right here are actually planters that we would work with the USU Extension on doing landscape design that would be native to the area. And then we just have a small section of grass right here, and then out on the front place for the parade, so we still have seating for the Fourth of July parade, so. But this was the design that you guys actually voted on.
And I think the price at that time was three seventy or something like that, if I'm not mistaken, when we kind of priced it out then, so.
Okay, and then we're doing stuff in the back?
Correct. If we, if we're able to, once, and we're working pretty fast now with the state actually on this project, they want us to get the lines drawn. If we were to do that, and we are working with an architect to look at the current building that we may keep for our facilities, folks, we may look at tearing down the, the structure that we have right next to the parking and make that parking, so we'd be redoing a good bit of that, and the state would as well as they're coming in, doing their demolition work and building their new Sally Port and their new parking area.
And I think I looked at my notes. We wanted to wait on this because we were doing this building, the exterior windows and doors, the boiler, things like that, get that up to speed before we started doing that in the back.
Correct.
And now that we're to that, and would this go back out to bid? Because when did, how old is this bid?
Two years.
We didn't get a bid, did we? We just got?
We, we did, we actually did have a bid. How long ago was that, Cory?
Three years.
Yeah, so, so we do have the design, so that's a good chunk that's out of the place, way though.
So that, designs already been made?
Correct.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, Hoffman?
How much money is it?
It's four hundred. We anticipated about being around four hundred thousand.
I feel like that's too high for this, so I'm going to no.
Okay, Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Strunberg?
Yes.
Councilman Hamner's a yes. Councilman Wardle?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll add that?
Yep, absolutely. And the last one we had to discuss was the America two fifty celebration. And I think, I don't know, Brittany, you want to, I think you've discussed it with some of them. We discussed this before. The committee's gotten together, and they have a breakdown of the costs of the, some of it would be swag and merchandise. There's a scavenger hunt app, and then there was a celebration out at Desert Peak, if you wanted to, anything else you'd like to explain about that?
I think as I've talked to some of the council about it, I think we can see some places where we could cut. Again, this would be something that would be one-time funding, and/or we could use some tourism funds for this as well. I would be happy to reduce my quest, request to a hundred and fifty thousand for this, but it's whatever the council would like to do.
Okay, Councilman Wardle?
I like decreasing it to one fifty, so.
Okay.
I, I mean, how many times do we get to celebrate one of the greatest nations on earth and its anniversary? I think we should do this right.
Okay, I'm a yes also. Councilman Strunberg?
I'm good with the one fifty.
Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman Hoffman?
That depends. Where, so are we going to take some of it from tourism? Because I'm okay, I'm okay with the one fifty. We can take some of it with?
It's entirely up to you if you'd like to split the cost between.
I think that's what we had talked about.
So what would be the breakdown then?
I don't.
You can just split it in half. You can just split it in half if you'd like.
I think we need to nail down those details, how we're paying for it.
If you'd like, just to recommend seventy-five come from Parks and Rec Special Events Department, and then seventy-five come from tourism.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, I've got it.
Okay.
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 So we have five guesses.
Are you good?
Go ahead.
Okay, then just a couple of cleanup item, well, one cleanup and one I'd just like to ask your permission on. So one of the things that we've looked at the last couple of years is being self-insured on our health insurance. We haven't made that decision yet to do it yet. We, we had set aside some money in the past to get a fund balance prepared when we're ready to do that. We're not going to do it this next year, but I, one recommendation would be to put a little extra into that fund so that we're ready. When we talked to our consultant about a month or so ago, they said you're in really good shape. You may want to add a little bit more. And so my recommendation would be add another three hundred thousand dollars. We currently have nine hundred there. And then when the time is right, that would be something that we could do. If not, we can wait until we get to that point and make that decision, but that's just, just in.
Thank you. I sat in on those meetings, and they were very complimentary of the county, and they did suggest, they said, if you want to be, you're healthy to do it now, but if you really want to be over the top and make sure that you're in really good shape, wait one more year and put in some money there so that we can look at that following year.
Yeah, we'll have the discussion with them again to see if the timing's right. We're not a huge hurry, but just getting prepared.
Okay. Okay, I'm okay, I'm okay with it. Councilman Strunberg?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Councilman Thomas?
Yes.
Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Wardle?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and then just one cleanup item, one thing that I missed on the budget, this is in the airport fund. I transposed a number. So for pavement maintenance, the revenue should have been three sixty. I had nine sixty-five, which was another number that was there, so that should be three sixty. And then one on the expense side for the pavement maintenance, that should have been four hundred thousand.
Just one second, so revenue should be three sixty?
Yeah.
And maintenance should be how much?
The pavement maintenance should be four hundred thousand.
Okay.
As I just confirmed that with Lisa this afternoon, so. And those are the only changes that I have.
Okay, is there anything to do on this one?
I'm ready, I can, I can do an amendment right now.
Okay.
Well, do we need, well, we have to say yes to what he just said, so I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm requesting a point of order.
Chair recognizes Councilman Wardle.
For two amendments tonight. The first one is under the be it resolved clause that Exhibit A be amended to include the following. That meals on wheels, aging move from point two-five to point five FTE, food preparation workers and aging move from point two-five to point five FTE, under the projects line, the administration building landscaping, uh, be adopted at four hundred thousand. The American two fifty celebration be adopted at a hu, at one hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand coming from tourism, seventy-five thousand coming from the Parks and Recreation Special Events Line. That, and then in other adjustments that we add in, three hundred thousand dollars for the self-insurance fund, that we change the pavement maintenance numbers to reflect the following. That in the revenue fund, it should be three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and in the maintenance fund, it should be four hundred thousand dollars. That's my amendment.
That's correct.
Hearing a motion, uh, amendment from Councilman Wardle, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Stromberg, all those, is there any discussion or comments? Seeing, hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose, say nay.
Okay, the second amendment is to, at the end of fixed as so stated, we add in, be it further resolved that the county manager's office be directed to complete all paperwork necessary for the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award and submit it prior to the deadline.
Okay, hearing a motion, Councilman Wardle, is there a second to that?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Thomas, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those may oppose, say nay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the twenty twenty-five, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two as amended.
Hearing a motion, Councilman, uh, Wardle to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two as amended, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, Councilman Stromberg, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. Is adopted. That brings us down to Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, authorizing the appointment of a temporary Justice Court Judge Nathan.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, as you know, Judge Dow is retiring, uh, he's retiring at the end of this month. And we need to have a Justice Court Judge in place to continue that service that we provide. And so this resolution allows, um, really, we're going to appoint any temporary Justice Court Judge who would be qualified in that position to come out from the third district, uh, to serve as our temporary Justice Court Judge until we find that replacement, go through that whole process of hiring a new judge.
Okay, any questions or comments for Nathan? If not, Chair entertain a motion.
So moved.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Hoffman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. That is adopted.
Can I just piggyback on that one just quickly?
Please.
Just so that you're aware, Nate and I did meet with, uh, the court on this position. And they'll be closing this position, I think, on Friday, if I'm not mistaken. I think it's on the twelfth. And so there's a nominating commission that needs to be appointed, and I think I've discussed that with you. So we have a few names that we need to appoint, and that nominating committee, commission will, um, look at all the applications that come in, and it'll recommend three to five to the, to the county executive, to myself, to, to select, and then it'll be ratified by the council. And so I'll be working with you. One, first, we need some names, I think two names at least for that nominating commission, and then we'll be working as we do the interviews. But this typically takes six months. We're doing this as fast as we can so that we have coverage here. And so as soon as you can get me those names, we'll get that committee, commission up and running, and they'll be receiving, um, those application. I think it went out to the bar, it went out to every sitting judge in, in the state, and it was, I mean, I think it, they have quite a few applicants for this, so we're looking forward to moving forward with this position.
Thank you. And, and so I've talked to each of you about it, uh, different names and things like that, so we'll get those and give it over. Andy, are you the one that you want the names then?
Please, yes.
Now bring us down to action items number nine, elect the twenty twenty-six, uh, chairman and vice chair. Any nominations or comments on that, council?
I would make a vote, should we keep it the way it is?
Hearing a motion from, I don't want to hear that motion, but hearing the motion from Councilman Hoffman.
Hey, I can second that.
My friends. Hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman, second from Councilman Thomas, any fe, further discussions?
We can vote no.
I know, we're outvoted. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those may oppose, say nay.
Wait, did you guys vote for yourselves?
They, they did.
Might as well.
I voted for, I voted for Jared.
Okay, now bring us down to the adoption of the twenty twenty-six council meeting schedule, what you have, Andy, you have before you, go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, I forwarded a copy of that to you last week, and then you have a copy in front of you as well. You can see there just a couple of little, some of the meetings, the months that we need to adjust or to look at. So a couple of months in April and July, we have a lot of, um, conferences between the council and between the manager's office. And so those months, it looks like we may just have the one meeting, if that's okay, in April and July. The one that we need to know from you is in May, NACO WIR is during one of our meetings, but we're not sure how many of you will go. So if you can let us know, we will know whether or not that meeting needs to be rescheduled, so.
I will be at a different meeting, not, not the WRI.
Okay, if we have a, still have a quorum, we're good to go. So just let us know, that one we can.
I usually go to the WIR meetings, so I plan on going to that one.
Probably need to plan on moving it.
We need to move that meeting then, okay. I'll be here.
I'll be here. Sorry, I have a change of thing.
So we can move, we, we can, up to you, if you want us to have the one meeting in May, or we want to have, just move it to the twelfth?
Any, uh, comments on that? Move it to the twelfth or?
Yeah, it is hard to have them back to back, but.
Um, just one thing on, on the date of the twelfth, I was speaking with Ian from forty-seven G today, and they are working on putting together a flight into Washington DC for some of the projects for energy and other things that we're interested in, military, things like that, um, uh, that week of May twelfth, just so you guys are aware, they've invited us to go. So that is something that we, um.
So we just one.
We can just.
Part of energy and other things like that.
Good, good, good opportunity. Just have one meeting then, is that the nineteenth? Okay, we'll scratch the, that one then.
In the April, May, I propose, I think we just have one meeting.
Yeah, we, we have too many conflicts later in that month, so I think the one, if that's okay with you, one would, would be what we would recommend, same with July.
If we need a meeting, an additional meeting, we can always add.
Absolutely. Other than that, and you, you see the, the schedule going on from there as well, so.
So recommending one in July, just making sure we're getting that on the record.
One, one in April, May and July then.
Okay.
Yeah. But keeping the rest of our dates.
Said, we can al, is fluid, so we can always add.
Yep.
Need to be. Okay?
Yeah.
Do we?
Andy?
Need to vote on that?
One question I do have.
Sure.
In looking at the, the budget schedule, are we looking at doing the revit, revenues, projected revenues on September first, or doing that on August eighteenth?
That one is up to you. I didn't, I didn't put that one in there, I'm sorry.
Like to do that on August eighteenth. If we're going to talk about capital improvement plans and everything else, we should at least have projected revenues.
Would you like to have that at a five o'clock work meeting then?
I think that we just, I don't know if.
Yeah, just.
Yeah.
Turn it to five.
Okay.
So we'd have three meetings in August?
Two.
No.
Just two. So we're to change?
From seven PM to five?
Oh, okay.
On the eighteenth?
Yeah.
So now I have a September one?
Any other questions?
Now, of course, the last one in December, we typically don't have if we're prepared to adopt the budget, but we have it in there just in case.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the twenty twenty-six tentative meeting schedule as we have talked about in this meeting tonight.
Hearing a motion from Councilman Wardle, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Hoffman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those that may oppose, say nay. Thank you. That will bring us down to boards and committees. Thank you for coming. We have one, uh, on the audit committee, one vacancy. And Councilman Hoffman, you have, uh, an application to read in?
No, I think it's not here.
Yeah, it is.
Well.
Didn't Mike come in today?
It came in, but it's not in this.
I didn't know that to you this morning.
Yeah.
I created a key thing though, so.
I've got it. Let me find it. Do you want me to pull it up before you tie? There you go.
All right, so Mike Rapage, who is here, has applied to be on the, um, audit committee. And I think we ought to approve him. All you, if you guys know who Mike Rapage is, he used to be the Colonel for the Highway Patrol.
He's sitting back there.
I think I said that.
Oh, did you? I wasn't listening.
Well, make it dear.
I'm good. Who's online?
I watched this last week online.
So, um, yeah, I would recommend that we make approval to, um, accept Mike Rapage onto the audit committee, and then you guys can't give me any more crap about him either.
I'll second that Ty Hoffman has recommended a name to place on the audit committee after five months.
Mike, I think you'll go off in there.
Yep. So hearing a motion from Councilman Hoffman, Mike, uh, Rapage, and second from Councilman Wardle. Is there any further discussions or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those may oppose, say nay.
Now, Mr. Chairman, as we talked about this back in June or May, you talked about that you would work with the attorney's office and the manager's office to set up a training so everyone's aware of what is going to be happening. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I think if any of us need to help out with that, please call upon us.
Thank you. Okay, that will bring us, uh, I have, um, several, let's see, board applications here.
Here they are, here's, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. On aging, Pat Hartley, um, is to be reappointed for the second term, um, and that would be expiring on November, or December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. Is there any, and also Mr. Berger and Amber Eason. Is there any, uh, reappointment to the Aging Committee? Is there any comments or?
Mr. Chairman, I serve on this committee, uh, representing the.
Then you should be presenting these names, but go ahead.
And so they're all, they're all active, they're, they, with, I make the motion, we have to reappoint them because they've been very active and still want to do it. So I make that motion.
Okay, hearing a motion, Councilman, uh, Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second from Councilman Stromberg, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. Who's over Lake Point Cemetery and Park? Nobody?
Mr. Chairman, you are.
Great. Melissa Wright, uh, to be appointed for a four-year term, expiring, uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. Uh, Mark Boss, um, four-year term, expiring the same, uh, December thirty, uh, thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine. And William Harris, uh, for Lake Point Cemetery and Park. Um, is there any discussions or comments? If not, um, entertain a motion.
I believe there's only one opening though, as I see on the notes, is that correct?
We have two that are expiring.
They have two that are expiring.
Yeah.
Okay.
How about, if I make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Hearing a sec, and Hamner makes the motion, second from Councilman Stromberg, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. Then down here on weeds, we have Marlon, uh, uh, excuse me.
So, uh, we have Marlon Yates, he's already served a full-term. Board recommends reappointing him to a second term that will expire on twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-nine.
Thank you, Councilman Wardle. I'll make that motion also, Councilman. Hearing a motion from Councilman Hamner, second from Councilman Hoffman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. Thank you. And do you want to make, go ahead. Uh, Chair entertain, I mean, Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Uh, there's an opening on the Tourism Tax Advisory Board, and Tyler Guy, who is, uh, been active in tourism and with the Western Music Songwriters Association, um, has applied for this position. And I'll make that motion to, uh, appoint Tyler Guy to the Tourism Tax Advisory Board.
Hearing, hearing a motion from Councilman Thomas, second from Councilman Hoffman, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those that may oppose, say nay. That is appointed. Do you, do you need these back, Nikki? You have all that? Okay. And then we do have other opportunities, so anybody that's listening to this or, uh, that you may know, they're welcome to apply for those boards. Uh, council updates, Councilman Hoffman.
The only thing I was going to mention was the forty-seven G thing, and then the Kershaw, get your money in, you gotta get it to families.
Families that.
Oh, hey, Kershaw.
So, Nikki, I'm going to encourage you to swear as much as you can the next day or two, put your money in there, okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
Don't worry, wife, you told me to say it. I don't care. Tell her to go for a good shot.
Councilman Thomas, any updates?
No.
Councilman Stromberg?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman Hamner will pass, Councilman Wardle?
I actually do have an update. Uh, last week I was gone to the American City Council Exchange where we looked at a couple of different, very important issues that will, that could be affecting our county. The first one is that, uh, they, they asked us to have a discussion and we led the discussion on a model bit, a model policy on home-based business and the ability to create entrepreneurship within the community. If you're not aware, this is how Ryan Smith started. Um, when you look at Apple, it started in a garage. And that there are many jurisdictions now that are making it almost impossible to do this in a cost-effective way for families or for individuals to provide that entrepreneurship. That resolute, or that model policy will be going forward to the entire group in the July conference to be adopted by legislators and city and councils, city councils, county councils and commissions. The second one is one that we need to watch during this session at the legislature. There is a movement, and it is a very strong movement, to abolish the property tax, to increase the rates of income tax or sales tax to replace the property tax. It is a deeply concerning trend, and in the discussion, I think we need to be aware with our state legislators. We've seen some of these movements already that push, when the state takes the control of that money, it takes it out of the ability for the locals to, local jurisdictions to do their job effectively. The second thing, uh, that they brought up is there should be a series of questions that we ask when we increase property taxes. Number one, are you getting better government services by increasing the property tax? That should be measurable. And so the, the idea that we raise the property tax and then figure out how to spend it is something that is really backwards and something that we should be very aware of right now. The second thing is that if there are going to be levies, so for instance, if we were going to impose a levy or a voted upon. to impose a levy or a voted upon tax, it should always be done in a November election, it should not be done in a primary election. They recommend that if you can, and we had great counsel and discussion about getting rid of special service districts or RDA districts, that you try and keep it in the decision makers and those who are voted in to be the decision makers' hands, so that they are the one accountable instead of appointed people. One of the thing is very interesting was there was a discussion about how we budget and what is the common practice, and the common practice is something we've discussed for four years now, and that is incremental budgeting, and that it really needs to be changed by most governments. The National League of Cities President, past president this last year was in the meeting, and we had an incredible discussion. I don't agree with the entire principle, but his city adopted zero-based budgeting across the board that netted a significant savings, that, and we saw this tonight work in the priority base side. And so over the course of the next six months, we will be developing, I've been appointed to a subcommittee to develop statements of principle when it comes to budgeting and budget allocations made by councils, legislators, so that we have accountability and you have measurements of effectiveness. And so that is the result of last week's meeting. There are several resources that we can give on property tax reform, and when we look at how do we, how do we view property tax, how do we measure it? So I just wanted to report to the council that.
Thank you, Councilman Wardle, appreciate it. That'll bring us down to the managers' update.
Yeah, if I can just mention a couple of things. First, we'd like to introduce our new purchasing manager, Daniel Folks. Want to raise your hand, stand up. Brittany will do a dance with you if you want to, but he comes from the East Coast, he lived in Virginia DC area, and he went to University of Miami, correct me if I'm wrong about any of this. And then most recently, he worked for, for the IRS doing purchasing, and he just moved out to Utah, how many months ago?
Two or three.
Yeah, so we're very glad to have him. He has experience working on the federal side, and so he's already getting to work on that, so please welcome Daniel Folks as our new purchasing manager. The second thing, just a quick update, and it was mentioned in the public comments, one of the things that we approved in the budget, which we were waiting for the approval tonight, was to do the pay and comp study. Matt from HR and I met with Victoria, who did our study before, we met with her on Friday, she's given us a contract, I'll sign that contract tomorrow, we'll get started on that as soon as we can. And we'll, once we get the results back, we, if, depending on what the recommendations are, we'll implement some of those as soon as we can, and assuming we have the budget for that, but we'll bring that back to you, but we're starting kind of immediately on that, just so that you're aware of that. And Brittany has a couple of things. One I'll mention for her, she wants to mention, we had Smith's open house, and tell them how that went, the groundbreaking.
All right, guys, we have some really exciting things to talk about today, so Smith's opened this last week, Andy and I attended the VIP event, it was like a high school reunion for me, it was kind of fun. But anyhow, we have, we have had reports back from, so first off, I want to congratulate the city. It's the biggest groundbreaking that Smith has had in the history of Smith, and their first two days of sales were record-breaking sales, so pretty exciting. I don't know if you guys have ever been to a Maurice Cheese Island, but it's to die for, the Parmigiana Reggiana is fantastic, so try it out. Okay, but anyhow, so that was, that's amazing, exciting news for our community. I just wanted to give a few updates on Parks and Rec specifically. A few weeks ago, there was a cancellation of all equestrian events due to a virus outbreak of horses, and now that's been lifted by the state veterinarian, and so we are open for open ride and equestrian events again. I wanted to make you all aware that when we still, although it's winter, we're still working on the pool. Currently, they're working on the mechanical room, the pump systems, and we have the plumber looking through all of the plumbing and, and also electrician looking at all the power that we have to, that buildings to make sure that it's adequate for the needs and with the budget approval of having the snack shack upgraded, we'll start working on that right away. Yesterday was the RPO meeting, and something was exciting, is Lake Point has adopted their transportation plan, and so we'll be kind of working on integrating that with ours as well.